Good morning, everyone, and welcome this morning to our special board meeting here at Workday. We're going to start today. We have Rema Grandos and Gina Eckhart on via Google meeting. I just call. And so with this, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we need a motion to drop the agenda for today.
I agree.
Okay, I have motion made there for a second by Gina. Put it off the agenda. Hold this paper.
Aye.
Okay, 6:00. And moving on to our planning discussion. First on the agenda, we have budget public.
I'm going to start out with the first page that you have in the packet here, please. Because what Miranda is going to share with you applies to thoughts on this, sort of. Because today, in the Salina Journal, the information we've been receiving from the State Department is, at this point in time, we have really no idea what our per pupil allocation will be next fall. When we do our budget in the summer, to know what money we'll get, the papers say GOP is urging K-12 and higher ed to reduce spending. And if you remember, the Supreme Court settled a ruling about a year and a half ago about what spending needed to be to keep up with what has gone on. The state of Kansas had dire income as a state and had to reduce what they gave to schools. So this page would show you if our world was perfect and we got what we got last year. I took last year's budget page. We know this next year that we can count the highest of the past two years or an average. And this is where, I believe, the error came into play. When we started the school year and we had an understanding that we would be losing $90,000 this year. Well, the reality is, when those discussions took place, we were using the wrong enrollment figure. If we used the enrollment figure from 2018, '19, you see on this sheet that that's 330.310 students. That's higher than 311 that had been previously used. Because we're going to do something different with preschool, the FTE for preschool to 10, and I let everything else except CTE, the potential of losing a student in that and losing time, I reduce that by one FTE, and the rest of it is held consistent.
So we can count the highest?
Of the last two years, you can count the highest year there. Or if it's to your advantage, to add what has been in place. To average the current year and the two previous years, you could take the average of the three, whatever gives you the highest figure. We had 311 last year, so you can see the benefit of being able to, next year, use a 330. But the following year, those high numbers are going to be gone. And so next year's budget really will be impacted by that lower number, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. But for next year, if everything stayed consistent, we could use that 330.310 from the 2018, '19 year.
Okay.
So, and if you remember when we talked about the audit coming, the auditor was here early this spring, and he adjusted numbers in train, reduced lunch and transportation. And with that adjustment, we'd get a higher computer general fund. And so at the next board meeting, we will ask you to have a special meeting at 6:45 to approve the budget so we can accept and extend our budget for this year, our authority up to $23,000. So that's a benefit in all of this that's going on, that we end up with $23,000 more this year that was not expected until the auditor came. So if you take those figures that I put on there, just kind of estimating, with using the highest of the two-year average, and then messing with the weighted enrollments, you'll see that potentially we could have 734.6 weighted enrollments for the multiplication and allocation by what we were supposed to get by the Supreme Court, the $4,569. That article in the paper today, and the conversations that we've had with the State Department, that in Kansas, you cannot spend more. You can have a budget that looks really good on paper, but you cannot spend more than you collect in taxes. And so being cautious about that, the conversation has been, well, it is hoped that we can maintain what the Supreme Court said we needed to, at $4,569 for next year. But the reality is, if they don't have money, they can't do that. And I don't know what, nobody knows what they will do. That's, I just want that, as we're talking budget plans and thinking about the future, to realize that what we could possibly have had as a $74,634 increase next year, the reality is, we may just have what we have this year. Or we may even have less if they can't, if they can't fund the allocation this year. If you remember back in the late '80s, many of you weren't on the board. But when the state didn't have the money, they dropped that per pupil. And that's why the lawsuits came about, in Montoya in 2006, and then the Gannon that happened within, the Supreme Court heard it in 2016. So, anyway, then I put on here, because one of the things when I had talked with, and Miranda, I was just looking at an email from somebody else. Miranda has worked really hard, and she has some explanations. But there are just some things that we know that will be expenses next year. The urban retirement next year, we will have $15,000 that qualifies for that. We know that we have a lease on the computers and a lease on the high school roof this year. To date, out of the general fund, $550,000. The new gym floor that I put out for bids for next week, potentially, and all my conversations are going to be at a minimum, probably $20,000. And the new growth, depending upon which choice you make, in my work with estimates, could be potentially $24,000. And then we had the woodshop heating unit burst into flame. So we know we have to replace that. We haven't got the bids from street plumbing or how to do that. I put $10,000 because in the other materials that we had, potentially, we could just put a heating fan in the corner of the air, like you see in some garages. And that was less than $10,000, but with inflation, who knows what it would be. So that is, again, just an estimate from experience of what. So if you look at those figures, we potentially know that out of whatever the budget is for next year, $661,000, almost $662,000 potentially are already earmarked for things that we have. That doesn't include us either. I mean, they're just things. So the reality is, what I wanted to show you was that, yes, everybody is hopeful that the economy will not bounce back and we will have what we're supposed to get. But the reality is, we could be working with the same amount of budget this year. We won't have the construction at the elementary school that's taken care of. But we know we have other things to take care of. So this is just kind of a preliminary to lay the ground.
Okay.
So you know that we could be in the area of $3 million from the state for next year. Could be more, could be less, depending upon funding. And we know that we have some of these expenses that could come out of other funds, capital outlay. But some of it still comes out of the general fund, so. And we have LOB to look at, which you're at the maximum 30%. So whatever the budget is for next year, 30% of that will come into LOB. But we cover a lot of things, salary, salaries, both certified and classified. We take instructional material, we take building repairs. We do a whole bit of everything on LOB because you can do that, so. So with that, I, Miranda has spent a lot of time the last week and a half trying to gather information that I asked her to do. Because we both, we've learned a lot in the last week, as you say.
We have, we have.
So I'm going to be quiet and let Miranda share with you several things related with your revenue.
Good morning. I'll try to talk loud enough for Gina and Bree to hear. Basically, what I'm going to do right now with revenues is just clarify some questions that came out of kind of the pre-meeting, clarify some things that Dr. Betty has asked me to gain information to present to you on. So, and hopefully, I, we are going to really enjoy this packing news that I'm going to start with. So I'm just going to scroll through and just kind of, you should have this in your blue packet. There's a blue packet of just what I'm going to talk about. It starts with this web fund document. So a big question was, how long do our, will we have web funds? So I spoke with Donna at the county to get clarification on this. So as you can see, this is the schedule that outlines how much we are going to get. And we will give funds until 2027. $95,816 is what we are currently receiving. That 2027 year drops down to $43,000. Something exciting here is that, I don't know if you guys are aware, but currently the wind farms are working on a repower. So as soon as the repower is complete, we will see an increase in funds here. However, as exciting as an increase is, we don't know what that looks like yet. When we get our June documents from the county, they will re-figure these amounts. But we will receive an increase of some sort on this funding, from the web funding. So hopefully, that answers the length of time that we're going to get this money and provides you something to kind of be excited or look forward to in finding out in June how much more we might get with the repower. The second thing that we have here, this is just straight out of the budget for this year, for the 1920 budget. So a big part of the budget, obviously, is your contingency reserve fund. And if you look, in 2017 and '18 and '18, '19, we have not had to touch that fund. We've carried $252,74 in there. And we expect that we will move that amount forward this year. We do not expect that we are going to have to get into any contingency reserve funds in the remainder of this year. Will we have money to move into here to expand, or kind of pad this fund? No, I do not think so. I think that's a discussion that, once the legislature decides all of these things, if there's some money, we can move it here, but I don't anticipate that's probably going to happen. And please feel free, these are just questions and things we thought you were going to need to know. I don't have everything here, and I can't anticipate all the questions that are going to come out. But please, if you have questions along the way, or if you have things that I don't know, I'll be glad to find them out for you. Just let me know. The next thing I want to go into is the two projects that we have currently ongoing. And one is actually complete, but one, and one is almost complete. But I want to take a look at what financially those projects have looked like for us. They're going to be in a little bit a different, little bit different format. This first one is your Lincoln Junior Senior High School safe room. And this project is still technically ongoing. So the format that I'm presenting this to you, and it's going to be different than the completed project. So basically, on this spreadsheet, what you're going to be most concerned about is the column on the right side that says district share. There's also grant expenditures and grant payments. Those are items that were, that qualified for the funding and were paid out. So those items, or those two columns you see will total at the bottom. They will balance. But what we're really concerned about here is, what did we pay? We knew we were going to have to pay 25%, but we also knew that there were going to be items that did not qualify. So of each bill, I have broken out everything. And if you look at the bottom right, you'll see that we have spent to date, $246,608.41 of district money on this project. Now, something to note here is the yellow highlighted items. Those were items covered by the I.D. Groberg Trust. So that's $100,000, and that's actually slightly more than $100,000. But those are the three items that per trust helped to cover. So with that said, about $146,000, we have spent out of capital outlay in a couple of different areas. Since this project is not final, I estimated the bills at the bottom, that this is truly an estimate, but these are the amounts I believe will be coming in. From Weems &amp; Company, $108,800, and from Schultz Square, approximately $740. In working with the state on this, and I've spoken to them a lot this week, he can't tell me for sure until he sees the bills, how much they're going to pay out. But based on the past and just based on our conversations, he believes we will, that they will pay out the final balance in the grant account, which is $61,652.77. That will leave us with approximately $50,000 to take from capital outlay or a different grant, I guess you could say, however we choose to do that. Technically, he said that they are going to be probably short about $500 of money that would have qualified, but we do not have that in our balance. He said, "If I had extra money, I would give it to you." Because you've done excellent on managing this project, but I don't. So I anticipate here that we will just get the, find what's left, the balance of that grant account. Any questions on that?
No, I have.
So then let's go to the project that is complete, or I know there's a couple minor outstanding things with curtains, but the construction is complete, I guess we can say. So as of, and I updated this as of yesterday. This is the form that was presented to the county, which documents everything that we spent on this project. The project total was $931,354 and some change. We received $914,025 from the web fund for that project. So we were over budget $17,329. Now, something that I got to figure in was the interest that all of those investments over time earned. So you'll see that reflected there at the bottom. We earned $17,546.53 since from our investments, meaning that we actually have $216.90 left over when that is calculated in. Any questions there on that? The bottom part is simply what we have, we kind of broke this out for the county. Because the county allocated $5,975 that was to be spent on the high school HVAC program, or project, I'm sorry. And as you can see, we only spent $33.75. So we presented to the county that we could potentially owe them $2,600, but they waived that, so we do have those funds there. Okay, Dr. Betty, I'm going to throw it back to you. I'll talk about these expenses here in just a minute.
So before we go on to anything else, do you have any questions for us? Does that make sense as you look, as we talk and look at budget options for planning for next year?
Is there a way that's $20,000? I mean, can we earmark that for that furnace?
Yeah, we should, yeah.
So I mean, still going to that, and even if we get them, we're going to use it for that.
And what I would check and see, what we end up having to do with the wood shop since we've lost the unit there.
Right.
Whatever you decide to do, we can ride away within, before school starts, notify the county that that has been taken care of and that money was spent. We appreciate them leaving it with us to take care of that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
What happened with that is, there is a dent inside where they could put a new unit. And so in conversations with the person that came out just to look at the system, we asked him to give it both ways so that we can present it to operate its student. And if they need it or something connected to the EPM unit, it's a one way. And it's not on the roof, but it's inside, like it is. So moving on, one of the things that we have to share with you, I put a copy of the draft from the State Department, Kansas State Department of Education. You hear a lot on the news right now about the federal government's efforts to put out some assistance to businesses and individual taxpayers. And some money went to the Education Department, which ultimately came to Kansas. You have two sheets of paper. This, this sheet of paper that's one page shows you what Kansas got. Kansas is getting $84 million. And the distributions that go out for schools, for education, $84 million is on the backside. The State Department gets a huge portion because of the duties and jobs that they've done in the COVID right wing chapter in our public school system. And $76 million is divided out to the districts in Kansas. That money that we will be receiving is earmarked to be spent in 12 different ways. And those 12 different ways are on, it's not the page number, it's on the second page. If you put it back, you're on the back of that. You see what can the grant funds be used for. And the 12 ways they can be spent are on those two pages. And then we got confirmation from the State Department. And anytime we talked about who gets what funding, somebody asked about this district and that district. So I just went ahead and copied it all. So when you're curious, you can look at it and see what other districts got. You'll notice that Lincoln goes in school number order, 298. We're going to get $56,199. In the draft forms that went out, we were supposed to get $56,200. So we didn't have a big loss there. And it kind of, you know, I find hard things to lap out, and that just, that's one of the things that was fun to like that, all of this. That can be spent, if you go back to the two pages before, on the things that are listed here. For technology, it can be spent for, if we find that learning during this time hasn't been as successful as we hoped, and kids have school next year and some are still behind, some of that money could be saved for summer school in the summer of '21. Because the money is at our disposal to be used according to these 12 rules between now and September of 2021. So they're trying to look out into the future because we don't know the impact on how long any of this will go on. But I thought it would be a resource that you'll want to have down the road to know that it can be spent. And your administrative team will be looking at what is best. One of the things I questioned was, and I don't have an answer for that, but I understand also board member had the same question. The money that we asked you to approve last month at the last board meeting for our infrastructure, for the file server and the backup system, if that's illegitimate, that impacts everything that happens with the COVID. The office, the schools, the support systems that we have. So it's things like that, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We can use this money and think what's going to be the best advantage of our district because they're not telling us exactly how it has to be spent. The only thing they're saying is, you can't supplant, you can't go back and pay salaries. And that's a big, if you know any of our Kansas people in Washington, DC, give them a call because unless our governor is given the option to put that into ways that the state already had funded, like the per pupil funding, right now, she can't put any of that money into that because that's already in place. But if they can get past that supplant issue, which kind of one always is, you can't spend it on things that you wouldn't ordinarily get. It has to be the extra things. So if you know anybody in Washington, DC, by all means, give them an email. Talk to our local representatives and senators too, because they need to hear what the impact of all this is going to be when they start looking and making legislation. But as you probably know, the legislature is not reconvening until later in May. So we really don't know what decisions will be made. So that is a key piece to planning for next year. We know that we have a little bit of money, that it has specific ways that it can be spent. And it can be advantageous to our district and to the students in learning.
We're just to verify that we've been meeting now or September, so within the period you asked. Month?
Between March. There's a date in March.
March is here.
So, and we did that meeting on April 4th or something. So we are within that framework. And we will, we will explore that. And it goes through September '21.
Yes.
So we have like a year and a half. So then, the next thing that I asked Miranda to work on is some of the regular expenses that we know we have.
Sure.
Okay, questions and clarifications on some expenditures that have come up in the past? We basically are going to provide you that information at this time. And if there are any other expenditures that you want details on, please let me know, and I will get those for you. First, there was a question on some of our lease purchases. We have two lease purchases currently. One is for computers and one is for a roof project. So I've copied both of those for you to view. The first one is the lease purchase on my computers. And as you'll see, the computers that we purchased are listed there midway down that first page. The balance at the time was $56,948 for those purchases. And if you flip over to the back, what you're really going to care about is, how long does the lease purchase last and what do we pay per year? So as you can see, this lease for computers goes to 2022. We pay $15,458.25 yearly. We paid fifteen thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents yearly. So we do have that expense that will continue for several more years. The second lease purchase is for the roof. And that is the roof at the high school, I believe, I was gonna say. The roof at the high school. That again was a five-year lease. It was opened in two thousand eighteen and it also ends in twenty-twenty-two in October. Yearly, we pay twenty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents for this lease. Any other questions about those two leases? Hopefully that gives you the details that you need.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Is there a penalty on early buyout on the computer lease, thinking about the grant of fifty-six thousand?
Sure.
And on the interest?
Sure, I will have to research that and find out how that was written because, is it right there?
It looked right there, so it's just no penalty.
No penalty, I didn't think there was, but sometimes it's better to research than give the wrong information. So no, no early buyout.
Yeah, since computer, computer and everything was included in that grant, that might be an option too, if you see the rest. I don't know, just thought.
And this computer situation or expenditure is gonna come up here in another one of the slides I have. So we can kind of talk about how we need to look at starting to rotate those computers and needs that could possibly qualify for... Here we go. Possibly qualify for the here spending. So thank you to Brenda for putting this together. This kind of really gets into detail of what that lease purchased and also what other technology we have in addition to what we need to do looking to the future. So as you can see, there, the purchases included in that fifteen thousand dollar lease are notated there to the right. There are four at the top and several midway down your page. Those are all included. There were some, and Brenda, if I'm, you may have to jump in here if I'm getting any of this wrong or if there are some questions. We did purchase some computers outright, which are the bottom two on kind of that top section. So with all those devices and hardware and the length of the lease, by the time the lease is complete, our devices and hardware are all going to be quite old. And we need to look at how do we do this in a different way to where we're not having to purchase everything at the same time, but where we can kind of start a rotation. So if you look in the middle, there's a twenty-four thousand dollar total out to the right side. So we're gonna talk about that section now. So Brenda's hope is to replace all of the devices in grades three through six with Chromebooks. And she has by priority how she would like to do this. There is an option of buying twenty-four thousand dollars of these Chromebooks at the same time. But we can also look at how to do that creatively and use priority. So priority one would be that the computers in Mrs. Cavalli's third grade class and the computers in Mrs. Luke's fifth grade class need to be replaced first. Then we need to go into priority two, who's next? And this creates a rotation for us and allows us to kind of spread these funds throughout different fiscal years. So there are two options there. We can spend that entire amount and just go all in, or we can create a rotation here. Brenda, anything on that that's correct? Okay. At the bottom, you'll also see a couple additional needs. And in talking to Brenda, these are needs that are kind of quite immediate because of the amount of use that the teachers get out of them. We do need four projectors, one projector, that's L E S, one at high school, and three Elmos. And those are totaled out there to the right as well. So Brenda and her thinking and reporting here is saying that, you know, if you have the money and wanna spend it all, you can spend forty-three thousand dollars and we can do this right now. Or we can get creative and come up with ideas on how we can keep the technology current, but not have to do it all at once. So there's some option there.
Could I interrupt you for a second? Denise?
Yes.
Would you want to explain to them what an Elmo is?
An Elmo, for lack of a better term, is a document camera. Therefore, if I had a document, I could put it down and it would project that document automatically up on my screen.
That's such a unique word, I wasn't sure that you would remember what it was. So it's important.
And as former classroom teacher, I know that I used all of these things and they become just like part of your life. Not having them is, is hard, is hard to do.
It creates more paper. And to build on what Brenda said, at the elementary level, they're particularly important because many of our resources are paper-based resources or books that work better for younger students. So you have to have something in order to see it on the larger screen.
Any questions about this section of technology for Brenda or for myself here or Dr. Betty?
I just want to insert little things. We don't know the wear and tear on the technology that we've sent home with kids either. It's very different when they're home than when we have an eye on the classroom of what goes on. So when those are turned back in, there may be some additional concerns that are shared with you as a board and things that need to be taken care of.
And they won't, the elementary laptops will not be covered by warranty. They don't have a warranty on this, so.
Is there any residual value in those?
We didn't get very much from the ones that we turned back in when we purchased new ones at the high school. It really wasn't worth our time to.
Time to do it.
Yeah.
We also found out in another district, it wasn't worth the time for our tech people to erase everything that's in the memory and then try to get rid of it. By the time we spent time on that, it was just easier to send them to be destroyed in a proper manner.
Okay, the next few pages are going to look very daunting and confusing. Really, I'm gonna summarize at the end, but there were questions related, there were questions related to copier usage and what that looks like. You see every month that we have a bill for twenty-five hundred dollars and I know that's a tough one and where is it going and what does this look like? So what you're gonna have here on these next few pages is a list of every printer that we have in the district. Your black, this is color copied for a reason. So those in black are black and white copies on each individual machine. The ones in color are the color copies. So you can follow that down. And at the bottom of the second page, we have a total. So total to date, we've made over six hundred thousand black and white copies. And we've made around close to three hundred thousand colored copies. So what does that look like on the bills is the big question. If you go to page three, what you're going to see... First, these printers and copiers are broken down into two different parts. And we pay two different bills for them. So on the right side, you're going to see your printers and you're gonna see your copiers and copier slash printers. So your printers and Brenda, those are the ones that are...
There's four network printers that are managed by the company, Xerox company that we go through. And they send us the toner, they do the maintenance, if they break, they replace. We also have deskjet printers, which is not included in this at all. So we do have a kindergarten, a preschool, Dr. Betty, and one that we use. Steve Crisp, I think, has one for track and all that.
I have one in my office.
And Christie. That we purchased toner for that's not included in these costs. So, but these four are. So your printers, so far we've made twenty thousand copies total this year, color and black and white. And we pay ImageQuest for that. The copiers that are printers also, we've made over a million copies. You can see that break down there. Now, we pay Xerox for that bill and we pay ImageQuest for those overages. So when do we get an overage? If you go over to the left side now under billing information. So Xerox gives us an allotment in that monthly payment that we pay of black and white and color copies that can be made. So we included, get this number here, the sixty-one thousand blue, uh, black and white color, or black and white copies, and we get eleven thousand color copies included. And it shows you what they charge us to get to that twenty-five hundred seventeen dollar payment per month. Now, when we go over that, we pay overages quarterly. And quarterly to date, I have paid ImageQuest for the overages one thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Now, monthly, we also pay ImageQuest for that management fee where they monitor and manage and do all that, fix it if it's broken, replacement, seventy-four dollars and ten cents. So that is how that all looks. We are in contract with Xerox until six thirty of twenty-twenty-one. So at that time, we can choose to go this direction or another based on what you guys would like to do. Any questions about that?
So the additional, I don't think I know way to go back, but I mean, additional overages here, I mean, is that because of the mass, or some of it could be because of the mass copies for maybe the packets and things like that that went out with the kids, is that?
So since, since we pay this quarterly, I actually just paid the January, February, February, March, and April on your last, so you had our last meeting.
Then billed for any overages for all the packets we just printed.
Some of them, I would say, would be included in that. The breakdown of exactly, I'm not sure. Because it kind of depends on when people made their copies. So some may be included in that last quarter, but I would anticipate that probably more will be coming in the next quarterly bill for the significant amount that we use of them. Yeah.
And so Xerox, of course, won't be like some companies who would maybe cut schools a break because of all of this and understanding what the situation is, right?
That's a Brenda question, she's shaking her head. Shaking her head, no. It would be great if they did. I guess it's always a question we can ask and ask. You can ask and be told no, and that's, sometimes it's worth the ask, so. I might write that down, Gina, just in case.
Just curious.
Yeah.
But that is a valid thing, Gina, to bring up because for technology purposes, there have been some real benefits that those companies have provided to our patrons and to the students. So, you know, it's nice to recognize that some people have realized that it is a hardship on our families.
And it, you know, it's probably a quick conversation with somebody in customer service of, you know, are you willing to help anything? We've had other vendors that are just someone to check in kind of thing, so I don't mind doing that, I will.
Suppose if anything fell in this cycle, we're probably actually less copies because we haven't been in the building since, so it's not a problem.
Hopefully we won't all send the other. Yeah, we'll buy a whole bunch and then, no. Yeah, yeah, all the way. Okay, I was asked to do some research on recent auto purchases. So what we have here, obviously this is not all of the vehicles in our fleet, but this is the ones we've purchased recently. And those that are probably used the most. And I think this was just for conversation of how do we need to plan for the future? So we currently, the last three vehicles we purchased, we purchased the ten passenger four transit van in two thousand seventeen. I do have, I'm sorry, that doesn't have a dollar sign, ooh, usually I'm not make that mistake. But you can see we paid twenty-six thousand eight hundred sixty dollars for it. The mileage is listed there and the use of that one is for just sports and activities. So that's our newest in the fleet. Number twenty-two was purchased in two thousand fifteen for twenty-three thousand four hundred two dollars. It is primarily used for activities and teacher in-service. Somebody has to go out to Salina or Kansas City or wherever, that's the one that we typically send out of town. Number fourteen is the other traverse. We purchased it in two thousand eleven for twenty-six three thirty-three forty-four. And that one is used for activities. It is also the one that we use for special education in town for those needing to be transported within Lincoln, in Lincoln County. Beyond that, we have others, other, obviously, vehicles in the fleet, but I was just asked for a recent. Any questions about that?
We do have other regular expenses that we know we've had before. We can't tell you, as we've said before, the savings that we have at the elementary school with the new system because school's not in session and so what the thermostats are set on. And we can't do individual rooms there. If a building is in there, the room shouldn't be air conditioned. So to have a comparison, if you remember, the architect, the engineer had told us that, well, we can take your spring expenses and compare them to a year ago with the old one and if you tell you the efficiency or who won't be able to do that. We might be able next year to look at all things. So we do know that there was a hint of reduction in the last month's bill is where we got it, but not enough to tell you. Next month, we'll be able to give you a little better idea. But typically, our utilities run us around eight thousand dollars a month when you're looking at gas and electricity and water. So those are things that you need to keep in mind when you're thinking about a budget because that's a hundred thousand dollars of budget as we might have got. One of the things that the Kansas law changed, and that is, it used to be you could take that out of capital outlet. Well, not anymore, we take it out of the local option budgets where we have most of that put and that's an okay place to put it. And the district is part of a group that gets better cost for transporting gas. Several years ago, about twenty years ago, K A S B got a consortium together and we're part of that. And so we save a bit on gas transporting for our winter expenses. So the things that are there that you have known about as a form of education in the district, you've taken the best opportunity to get the best price that we can afford. There are other routine things, the monthly trash pickup. You know, there are just things that are routine that we have to take care of. And there are other things that we haven't, because our district has struggled with funding, we haven't been able to maintain, and you're gonna hear a lot about this in the future when we talk about anticipating expenses. Curriculum, we, you know, we haven't done very much with curriculum staff. We'll be working on developing some guidelines for that and expectations and we'll be coming to you for curriculum adoptions. Now, in this day and age, sometimes those are textbooks and sometimes they're electronic material. But in the past of a district this size, if we were doing a math adoption across the district, you're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars with textbooks and then getting the authority to hand drop, uh, copy black and white. hand drop, uh, copy black and white pages on the copier. There are just different things. The elementary school currently uses a beginning reading program that you make all the copies for kids' books.
Yes. And we really went through and looked at, Mrs. White and Mrs. Walter and I spent a whole day going through all of those programs to see how often we're using them, what our goal is in using them, and to find out if there's ways that we can more cost-effectively use them. And I, later on, we can go through that, but we have went through each one of those.
It is on a list of things to share with you, but the point is, even if you go electronically, for the kids to have the book and the material, we had to make copies of. So even, sometimes whether it's something within science or something in social studies that is now electronic, there are paper products that we need to support that with the kids. So just, when you think about anticipated expenses, there are things that we have kind of set aside and because we haven't had the funding, but we're to the point where it is impacting some of the things that we're doing. The other thing that is ongoing is uniforms. And again, those need to be on a regular rotation cycle for the sports that you have. You need to know that it's going to cost you around $7,000 for whatever program it is annually to keep that, you know, if you have six, if you have six teams, it's a six-year cycle, if you have seven teams, it might be a seven-year cycle. But you have to plan on taking care of that. And sometimes things get worn out and you have to have a system to get the new ones that you meet or the sizes that you don't have in place. You might have littler kids that are out and you need smaller sizes, or you might have a bigger kid, just all those things. And things that we need to think about, that we need to anticipate every year and be able to fund that to get both the instruction, the classroom environment, the meals provided, all those things have expenses that are ongoing that don't go away. So we just need to anticipate that nothing is going to be free.
Somebody have any more questions regarding anticipated expenses or any of the material that I'm hearing? I know it's a lot of information.
And feel free, as you sit and think, because this is your meeting to discuss, feel free to ask any question that may, something may surface later about the copiers. Bring that up so that we can do our best. If we don't, can't come up with an answer, we can find an answer for you later for me.
So it's not like we definitely need to look at it because we do have a few contracts, a few contracts that are coming up to an end. And just talking about our lease purchase, which bill had a total of $112,494 on this purchase bill in 2022, that bill.
The reality is, TJ, what you said, the two leases come up in 21, the transportation that we'll talk about later comes up in 21. There, there are things that, that you'll want to discuss and talk about.
It's a lot of good information. Anybody have any more questions in this?
No.
So I'm going to move on then to the changes to summer food service proposal.
I cannot tell you how exciting it is. One day this week, we fed 150 students breakfast and lunch. We've been averaging around 135 in that, in that window every day. The interesting thing is, from your information, the board treasurer has always done a lot of the business and giving the refunds, et cetera, reimbursements, not refunds, the reimbursement of food service. So Miranda has been watching with me information about cooking, as we've shared before, the hospital, which I didn't know until this winter, the hospital provided, they were the program that provided the food for our summer program. The last couple of years, our intern, Preston, has been the person that is at the food site keeping track of the kids and making sure that they don't take anything out and they eat what is there, you know, the supervisor at the spot. And we fed around 25, 26 kids in the summer program. So I shared that with you for two reasons. The first one is now we are feeding on a, on a regular basis about 103 children ages one through 18. And we do know that we have some 18-year-olds that have gotten graduated high school or gotten GED or whatever case may be that they qualify because they're 18. And we have some daycare centers that are taking advantage and families that are taking advantage for the kids from one to five that normally wouldn't be in the food service program. So that is a good thing. But as Miranda and I are looking at the changes in moving to a summer school program, there is some difference. They, they have to go to that location and eat. They can't pick up the meal and take it home. The meal requirements are just a little bit different and how we accommodate that, I guess what I would say is, it would be to our advantage for the district to have a summer food program. But as we look at the details on that, and hope we have more information for you next Monday at the board meeting, not as many children are going to be benefiting by it if we can extend the current program through the end of June. It was due to end with the end of school, but the way with the federal government has taken it through June, is there an advantage? When we look at the services and what we can do, et cetera, what is, what is the best advantage for the district? Do we go to the summer schools program or do we stick with the SFSP program?
Well, part of that's going to depend upon if they hold that ten or less on social distancing, how can you have 25 kids in the same room?
That is exactly right.
Can't.
And there, there are still lots of things that are dependent upon that. And nobody, you're right, nobody knows what.
You don't know yet.
But we'll be looking into how the funding and the benefits for kids, what we know, by May 5th, the governor will have shared, May 4th, whatever the day is, that day, the governor will have shared her.
Complaint.
Executive order on how, how we handle the next part of this. So there, there, we are in just uncharted territories. It's the opportunity for our district to make a decision because we know the hospital will not be involved in the future at all. So how do we make it look best for our kids? Any other questions about that? The typical summer program they have had has been sandwiches, fruit and veggie, and they come there and eat it, like I said, they can't take it away home. Some of the families we talked to, well, no, I had my school lunch in the evening, you know, because they take it home, they can make a soup for, soup there to their abilities. The families have signed up, they follow all the rules. On our end with Onibus Code, we can, we have all the documentation we need from our end, and if they're not hungry at noon, it makes sense. It's available there at 4:00, and maybe they're watching TV and doing the homework.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on to educational plan.
This is something that the principals have been working very hard on. May I back up one minute?
Sure.
In your packet, one of the things that we've been asked about were expenses, there's a vendor history page that looks like this. And we had been asked about, that's right there. How much, again, this is in consideration when you think about the high school HVAC system. The question was, how much have we paid the vendor that helped us with some of the heating and cooling problems? You can see that in 2018, we paid them $16,000 when the system was working, and then we paid them a couple of times this year. You can see that on that shop area, we've already spent $20,000, that shopping gym area with that outside vendor, that doesn't include anything that we had to look up there. Do these people pay for Salina?
I think that was actually a replacement of the company that's on high school.
Okay, so that, that could be that.
Yeah. Because when I looked at those bills, there was $3,000 for kind of the shop in there condition to remake them to make that. But they were also due in three, two or three rip-up payments.
They got the bid for the warranty.
Yes. Because he's, he's ripped up, you know, that goes about $7,000 a piece.
So that, that would be a mix of that.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that we had a question on was, so an ongoing expense for you is the district insurance. And last time I was kind of not very precise in the insurance at the elementary school because the roof, there have been some annoying things for the last couple of years with the roof at the elementary school. The insurance covers the building if it is, if a building is damaged in a storm or anything like that, but the rooftop, no, the roof as it currently is, unless it's a windstorm or something that, that takes away, there's no insurance coverage for that because of some things that have happened over the last six years or so. And the, the company that put the roof in will come and repair it, but the warranty is no longer in place. So the insurance recovered, managed, that meets their requirements, but the warranty on it is no longer a factor and they'll just, the guy who's over there will come out, fix it, and do what they can do. I did have a very interesting discussion with the insurance people about new kind of roof because it will be something we need to look at in the future. A new kind of roof where they have a company comes, come out and they have pictures and then they put a puzzle together, and in that puzzle, they make foam fuses that give a roof a bit of an angle. So the flat roof is covered with foam that gives it the angle so the water does drain off the top and doesn't settle. What happens on a flat roof as it gets older and older, sometimes it settles towards a new one, so the water does pond in the middle of the roof just with the age and with deteriorating of the materials. And they seem to be having much better luck with this system with the foam underneath the roof materials than they have had with the rockers, well, with rocks. A lot of places where I've been, we've put the rock up on flat roofs and you have to deal with that when those are, so that's just a side of it. But there is maybe a benefit when you get ready to fix that roof with a new system.
Give us some straight foam, and that's actually what they have in the high school too, that give it a gradual slope.
So that's what they did there, okay.
And in regards to roof, that's something to consider for the elementary school. I know when Gina and I went to the KASP conference, they conference visited with a company out of Oklahoma that did their own construction too, and actually instead of doing the flat roofs, they replaced it with a slanting metal roof that lasts a lot longer and have a slanting roof, unless we don't have any roof type units on top of the elementary school. I, I don't know what the cost is, but that's something that Gina and I just have got the information about. And when it becomes that time, I think it's very advantageous to look at the options we have. It was flat roofs in Kansas, I don't know why, but it lasted. Any other?
Thank you for letting me interrupt, but I brought you that.
Okay.
On the backside, there was also a question about expenses between Green Bush, which is a southeast Kansas education service center, and our move to Smoky Hill, as you well know this last year. You can see the expenses over the last two years between both of them. And so it has been advantageous to us to make the switch to Smoky Hill. We still do a couple of things with Green Bush, PDP and shopping, grocery shopping and we don't use a press, professional development or anything like that anymore. So those are ongoing expenses that I've had some questions about, and I thought it would be helpful if you had that. So I'm interrupting you.
No, you can start, actually, we're starting the educational plan.
The principals have been working on the document that you have for the educational plan.
Someone's got my card.
The missing thing has a dot. Oh, I got that.
A little closer. Yes.
So I don't know, ladies, are you wanting to present that, take turns explaining a different section?
I'll go ahead and start. And we've talked about some of these ideas before at our last meeting that obviously Mrs. Walter and I went and looked at both of our building goals and have talked about with our staff of those goals. Where, I just want to point out a couple of things on the projected list of students at LES for 2020, 2021. We've actually increased this for our first graders going into second next year. This, a week and a half ago, we picked up two more students that enrolled, and they are staying through August, so that was added. Also, for preschool, we went through our projected numbers. We're standing right now at about 20 incoming, I'm sorry, 22 incoming preschoolers, and it is fair to say we'd probably pick up more as well as parents decide whether four-year-old preschool is an option for their students. And then we went through and also added where we're missing a teacher, if the idea is to have two teachers at each grade level, but so I think this is a clear breakdown of where we stand for next year. Mrs. Walter and I both spent time speaking with both our classified and our certified staff about these different options, some of these different options. We also asked for their input and their ideas on ways to save and reduce costs as well. And I will just go through and summarize some of the ideas. When we talked about that idea of moving sixth grader to Lincoln Junior Senior High School, when that was presented to the staff, they were overwhelmingly in favor of that idea. At my building, there was some concerns about moving a staff member up and if, how that would look at the elementary school. Mrs. Walter, do you want to talk about how your staff viewed that?
Yeah, they, they were in support of it as well. They, there was really not, the concern was, if, when we talk about the other option, it's really hard with scheduling to not have an LES teacher come up with the sixth graders based on another option that we have, but we'll talk about this in just a minute. So that was a concern. The other, really, that was the only concern. They were really in favor of it.
As was my staff.
So.
There was a question about how does this, how is this option going to save money? That was the question that was asked by one of my staff members.
If that, if the board wanted to talk with you about that, the sixth grade would go in that, where it's currently the junior high section.
Correct.
There is room in that.
Yes, there is a room in there, yeah, that we could use. We actually have two empty rooms, but the one, there is one empty that's in that junior high hallway, that wing that we could keep them down there, that they wouldn't have to go where we have another empty room.
And is there any, just reiterating, is there any intermingling at lunchtime or advisor-based time?
With the older students? Yes, there would have, there would be some. The art room is down in that wing, and there are high school students that do take art at the end of the day. There are, I do have junior high teachers that teach freshman classes. So there's freshmen that come down in that wing also. But besides those two instances, I would say this year I've heard comments from the high school kids that they rarely ever saw the junior high kids. There's not a lot of intermain lane. Lunchtime would be, right now, our lunchtimes are split seven, eight, nine. Each one's shift and ten, eleven, twelve eats the other shift. So I would just do six, so eight in one shift and then nine through 12 in the other shift.
And at my building, some of the comments that were, that came from teachers and staff members were, if there was feelings in the past that students in sixth grade weren't quite mature enough yet to move to a different building, whether it's technology, whether it's just how students are now, that there's been a gradual shift where students, they felt had the maturity to move. There was also the idea that the class coming in has a lot of leadership as well. So that wouldn't be a more difficult fit. We also talked about curriculum. When you look at most curriculum, it's K through five and then six through 12. So oftentimes when we're looking at curriculum and different standards, we adjust them back down to the elementary level or we have to purchase two programs or something like that. So for that sense and for testing, it works better that way at a building level.
There was a concern in my building that was brought up just specifically for this year. Those fifth graders that will be sixth graders next year didn't get to end their fifth grade year. So what they're basically doing is starting, they would be starting in the, if this were to happen next year, it may or may not happen, I don't know, but if it were to happen next year, those fifth graders would be up in the junior high without ever finishing their fifth grade year and how maturity, you know, just those things that you have to consider when you move kids up in that kind of a situation. That was a concern with some of the teachers. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't really get to finish their fifth grade year. They're not really truly going into sixth grade like normal years would happen. So they would be going into sixth grade in the new building with new teachers.
Kind of an eighth graders.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be a cycle.
It's going to be, it'll be, just for this year, it might be more of a difficult transition, just for that reason.
And on the flip side, I had several teachers say it's kind of a natural time because we've ended, we've ended in a disjointed way. It's kind of the natural time for transition, unfortunately, due with our school closures. So we heard both of those perspectives. Option B, which would be consolidating the three ELA positions, the English Language Arts positions from three to two. Both buildings, I feel, were overwhelmingly in support of that idea. And they saw that it made sense. I did have a staff member at my building who expressed interest in moving up possibly if that was an option in order to teach English Language Arts. She was very in favor of that. And that's something that I called this date on Thursday and got information on her licensure process. And actually, moving from elementary to high school is a much easier transition licensure-wise than moving high school down to elementary. So that shouldn't be a difficult process. So you have somebody that would want to? Yes, has expressed an interest.
Good, very good. There, so this is what I was alluding to earlier. If this were an option that we would eliminate one of the, or not replace one of the English positions, then the high school English teacher and the junior high English teacher would have to absorb some of the classes that that position taught. And to absorb that, those, some of those courses and then add sixth grade onto that is really difficult without having another teacher. So in my opinion, if we were to do a combination of the two things, not replacing one of the English teachers and moving sixth grade up without an elementary, without a teacher, is going to be really difficult to manage. And I don't, I'm not, I've worked, kind of worked it through and tried to see if it'll work. And with our seven period day and with the teachers that we already share, it's really difficult to do that. So it's more manageable to do that if we could bring an elementary teacher up.
And on the flip side of that, that leaves us one classroom short. If you go, one classroom teacher short if you go back to the projections. Because if we would move sixth grade up, that still might possibly leave us one teacher short for classroom projections.
And then there is a consideration, just with the not getting a replacement for the English teacher is that we would lose some electives. And anytime you lose electives, it hurts kids. Journalism and yearbook for sure. I've done some speaking with the paw prints and we could, that's manageable, I think. I think we could make some changes there, reduce the number of course, or classes that we offer into one and then maybe get a para or something to help with paw print. So that, that might be possible to work with. Speech, we can do online, we talked about that before. But yearbook, yearbook and journalism, that's, to me, that's kind of a big, it would be a big loss if we didn't have that. And then something else to consider financially is journalism and yearbook is a pathway and we get funding for those kids who take those classes. So if we didn't have that pathway, we would lose that funding. And that was something I didn't think about earlier until someone brought it to my attention.
And Mrs. Walter, am I correct that yearbook and journalism, as long as a licensure practices test would be taken by the teacher, they could add that on as an endorsement area?
Yes.
They don't have to go through any additional schooling to do that, just add it on the test? The other, another part to this that we also discussed, as we said, there's several moving parts to this, is the idea of using someone effectively in between both buildings that could also assist with paw print and journalism and some of those other things. And it's important to note that if we do that, that would be more of an instructional aid position. Instructional aid position is someone who has more training and has more responsibility for curriculum planning, planning and classroom management than what a parent would be, but is not yet a teacher. Ideally, that would be someone who has had training and pedagogy or going through a program or even would have a teaching certificate. And we do have a staff member in my building and she has expressed interest and that would be a possibility that she would be able to move to that position.
So then the next option that we talked about was sharing staff between the two buildings. Just maybe using the staff that we have more creatively, maybe combining, what we have here is maybe combining some PE classes at the elementary level, opening up that person to do maybe something else. Or junior high, junior high teachers doing, or Lincoln Junior Senior High School's teachers teaching elective courses at the elementary school. So possibly maybe social studies for an hour down the elementary school or Spanish or something like that to fill in some gaps. And that way we can just try to find different ways to use our staff.
Sure. And there's two different ideas for this. You have to remember at the elementary level, I still have to give teachers a planned time and that planned time is secured through the negotiated agreement. And as of right now, with not having a music teacher, I don't have anything else to fill that other part of the planned time unless we've looked at combining PE classes. I will tell you, combining PE classes is not a first choice, particularly for your younger students. It's just difficult when you have 27 kindergartners or first graders trying to get through all of the PE and the testing that they're required to do. So that would not be ideal in this circumstance, but it is something without another option that we looked at. We also discussed things like having someone do a STEM block, but that's going to take a staff member to do, to teach that. Also a foreign language block, but again, that would be someone coming from the high school coming down to do that as well. So the other issue with this too is it is really difficult to share staff members that way. It boxes, it boxes us into schedules that are very difficult to change. And my staff was not in favor of those ideas because as I said, it really limits any type of flexibility in scheduling, which is difficult at both buildings. We spoke about compartmentalized teaching before. There wasn't a lot of support for this idea. Again, it isn't really reducing the core problem of large classroom sizes and it's very difficult at this time to get the professional development and be up and running for August in this system. So it is something to look at in the future, but as for right now, it's a difficult prospect. Do you want to speak on option E?
Just the elimination of some programs that don't, that have low numbers. The two that are listed here are baseball and wrestling. It says the group was evenly split. There are, you know, of course, there are downsides to eliminating any program. You know, this is what, these kinds of things are the things that bring a lot of kids to school and continue to be in school. So when you start eliminating some of these things, it makes it very difficult for some kids to even want to come to school. So I, this is, you know, it's, you have to look at the numbers and how much money you spend on it versus the number of students that it affects. And that's kind of the decision that was made on these two options. So you have to think about what money is brought in, uniforms, equipment, coaches, all of those things are expensive. And so those were the two options that we had. The group was, you know, they, at least in my building, I don't know about your building, they were, they were, there was not a whole lot of talk about it, but they, the, one of the suggestions that was made was to allow the athletic departments to fundraise more, be more flexible in fundraising so that they can maybe fundraise for their programs. They feel like they're kind of confined in what they can do for fundraising. So that was an option. If we wanted to keep baseball or wrestling or whatever program that we were looking at, use some creative ways to fundraise to help fund those activities.
And for option E, I had the same comment at my building. Some coaches or assistant coaches felt that they were boxed in and they weren't allowed to fundraise or crowdsource or look for alternative ways of funding and they would like more support on that. One of the things that was also brought up, rather than eliminating the programs to look at the number of assistant coaches or sponsors we have, that way we could still retain the program but reduce costs there. My group was very evenly split. There was some that felt that our first priority obviously is kids and education and teachers' curriculum. But there was others that do feel, as we've talked about before, that this is what brings students into our district and it allows us to remain competitive. I will say a comment that I had from a couple of people was that, please don't always just think about sports. Let's also think about programs like music because we have kids that come to this district because it's a, they excel in music and it is their passion. And music does provide, whether it be music or band, scholarship opportunities at a college level. And if we reduce teachers down there or that program down, we'd be losing some of those kids because they would go to outline districts that have a strong drama theater music program.
So that's a, I guess that's a consideration funding wise is that, you know, how much are we going to lose? How many students are we going to lose if we eliminate some of these programs or don't have some of these programs? And that should, that's a consideration.
Option F, which we talked about lunch preparation, moving into one central kitchen and then transporting over. I had several staff members who thought this was a good idea for cost savings as it did not directly affect kids as much and they'd like to see that option explored.
So then the other options at the bottom were just ideas that were thrown out at staff meetings, yeah, leadership team meetings, discussions that were had. In both buildings, basically. And so you kind of can see which building supported which one and the comments that were made if they did the support. So one of the options that was offered by the staff was to reduce the district to one band of vocal teacher. And that was from my building. And for the reasons that Mrs. Schmidt talked about, the elementary school didn't feel like that was a good idea because we'll lose students. Because we have, you know, if we don't offer those kinds of things for students as much, they may want to go somewhere else where they have that opportunity. One of the other options that was thrown out at my, one of my meetings was to reduce administration from three administrators to two because a lot of the districts our size have two administrators. And then one of the other options from my staff was reducing the district office staff. And or in conjunction or whatever, moving the district office to one of the buildings so we wouldn't have three separate buildings that we were operating. DS bus lines, that was kind of something that both of our buildings have talked about. You know, a comment was made at my building, somebody said that they thought one of our neighboring districts didn't even have buses, that they paid their patrons to bring their kids to school. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's, that's, is it?
Well, and there's also not always door-to-door pickup. Most of other districts, particularly in larger areas, have kind of centralized locations where you drop your student off and they're going to drop that. And I will say in my building, eliminating a contract with DS bus lines and going to a private high system that we own either buses or use more Suburbans or some other form of transportation was the number one pickup my staff.
And then the four-day work week was another one that was supported by both buildings. We didn't really discuss it much, but it was just brought up. Did you guys discuss that anymore?
We did, we discussed that quite in depth. I have a teacher in my building who actually worked on four-day work week for some time and she was very in favor of the idea. She said it reduced absenteeism, students were more engaged and it was a program that worked well for both teachers and students. So there was support there and they would like to see that option at least explored or some more data collected on that.
And then Mrs. Schmidt already talked about maybe reducing the supplemental percentages or reducing the number of assistant coaches or sponsors that we have. And that was, that was brought up by both buildings. And then our, our option, our last option was reducing the number of paras at the elementary school or sharing, being able to share some since we do not have any at the high school.
Patty had a question. I was just thinking out loud here with the assistant coaches. Are we required to have an assistant coach? Are we, I mean, we have to have a head coach and an assistant coach? I for safety, I'm not making issues. I don't know if it's.
I don't know that it's a requirement Patty, but I think it's a good idea. Because if the coach gets throws out, thrown out for whatever reason or, you know, things happen or if a student gets hurt, you need somebody there to.
Right, right. Well, when I think into, you know, just the other side of it, he said, she said type.
Yeah.
Type deal, but I thought it was required to have.
I'm not, I don't think it's necessarily required by case or anything, but I just feel like it's a good idea to have two.
Exactly.
We do have one program that has three, that's what was brought up.
Okay. Which program is that?
Football.
And then I'm going to interrupt for a moment while I'm thinking about it. The four-day work week. I can see, you know, the teachers, you know, four days or even coming in five or whatever, but I see a lot of that going four-day. I mean, it's going to be cost savings, but it's going to be, you know, our paras and our cooks, our classified staff that are going to be paying for that. Because your teachers and your salary staff are going to be getting your same amount of wages regardless of whether they're four or five days a week. But I just think that's going to affect our, you know, our more paid employees that have the job or do an excellent job, maybe need insurance. I mean, that's what they're working for is an insurance. Something to consider, something to think about, so.
Do you have a pack I want to talk even more about?
Okay.
And there's, you can talk about your discussions at the bottom.
Did someone have a question, I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask whether that was a certain day of the week, like Friday, or whether that moved or whether anybody explored.
If you look at the information that Dr. Summers presented, which is in that packet, there's a lot of information about Sunday, use a Friday, Sunday, use a Monday, there's a variety of information there. Some other things that were discussed at my building was, we talked about more times at the district level to fundraise for sports. How much are we paying Smoky Hill Service Center? And that was just presented by Miranda in our contract for this. And then how much are the cost savings do we rent or own this building that the board office is in? And if that would be something of a cost savings there. One of the really interesting things that came out of this week, and it actually came from a teacher that directed the question at Mrs. Walter and I, even, we weren't even talking about this particular area, is she has started to get feedback from parents, as I have and as Mrs. Walter has, that there are some students for a variety of reasons that are really enjoying and thriving in this process of virtual learning, whether it could be for social emotional reasons or maturity or parent flexibility or medical reasons. They're just really finding that it might be a really good fit for them, which then brings up the concern, and we try to speak about this to parents, that we've relaxed standards and given grace where this isn't what traditional e-learning would look like. But we do are fearful that some of those students aren't going to come back in August. And I've had that from some parents that it's just really working well for our family. It's working well for my kid. I don't think we're going to come back in August. And it also brings up that fear that a parent starts that in August and then later on decides it doesn't work for them. We've missed that September 20th count day by the time that we re-enroll. So the teacher was saying, maybe that's something we should explore. As a teacher, she sees some benefits to it. She loves being in the class. She loves being in the classroom, obviously, but she sees for the right students, that's a way that we could reach them in a different way. That would also allow us to look at those families in our district that homeschool or for adults that have not finished their GED or their diploma to come back. So there's a whole possibility range there. So that's something as a building that when we spoke about, there was support of. And the idea that we really need to study that in depth, but look at that in the future. And then one other idea was a hybrid virtual in-class instruction idea, which is something that where other districts are moving more to. And during this closure time, it's worked out in some areas. For example, you would have three days in the classroom, two days at home, or, or some version of that. But again, that needs.
For the, um, home, uh, homeschool kids or the virtual school.
Yes.
Work those, can those be counted? I mean, if we are sent in, couldn't they be counted in the September count?
Yes. Well, for next year, we've missed the deadline. And Mrs. White can speak more on this, but I know we've missed the deadline to apply for one. But in the future, those students are counted and waited. Brendan, what is the exact waiting on them?
It depends on how many minutes they're enrolled and actually in the program on certain dates. There's two windows, I think, for the virtual school. But you have to, um, in looking at KSDE's website, you have to write a letter of intent in wanting to start a virtual school in February and then start the process of getting that approved. And that starts in February. And then once you're approved, you have to be in approved virtual school to get that funding. But you have to go through quite a process to make that happen.
But there is a lot of districts our size that have those components. Seven Plains has one with Blackside Learning.
Smokey Valley, there's a lot. And you can go on KSDE website and see the list of those.
With the hybrid though, we're still responsible for meals. You have to meet days and having to send on meals somehow. Sporting event.
I don't guess. I think, yeah. Yes, oh, yeah.
And the sporting events coaching as far as if it falls on a day, we don't have the school to keep class. That means we're still gonna have to transport, right, just space.
Yeah. And I think that is all that we have for this. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Some questions towards this. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
I was just throwing in there because we have a virtual school and with that deadline in February, you can't contract with an established virtual school if you wanted to put that in place quicker if that was a concern of losing student count. Or I don't know if Smokey Hills has one, but we contract with Green Bush in my current district. And the funding is just split. But currently, it's more FTE funding for a virtual student than the regular state FTE. We just split it fifty-fifty. It's five thousand dollars per student right now. But it's anticipated that that will decrease and possibly next year to almost fifty percent of that. But you can get with an entity like we did with Green Bush and then that has already been recognized as a virtual program. Keeps you from waiting another year while you get your own letter in.
I'd like to ask, did you hear that Jeanne Lynn, the Bree?
Yes.
Okay.
So in this section of educational planning, I put in a couple of documents for you to look at. One of them is Board Policy VA, which says goals and objectives. And if you read down through that, strategies, objections, or needs for obtaining board goals. Cost-cutting strategies to combat declining enrollment and loss of budget authority. Um, this document is from 2002. So there are some parts in here that, uh, those of you that have lived here always, you will recognize the significance of that. Other parts you will not. But in the cost-cutting strategies for combining for, for dealing with loss revenue is, number one, determine areas for curriculum abandonment. Number two, reduction of current staff. Special ed is kind of set, gives a part of a co-op. There are limited things we can do with that. Combining bus routes, we're as efficient as we can be with as spread out as our students are. Establish an annual maximum rate for L and B. You've already done that here at thirty percent, which is the highest a district can go. This was so long ago, I do not know what QZA money is.
What QZA?
Yeah.
QZA option we had for free money, so to speak, W life or?
No wonder it's gone. So, number seven, explore shared staff programs and classes with neighboring school districts. Or your principals have talked about shared staff within the district. Set future schedules for conversations for buses and vehicle purchases. That's going to be a necessity because, two reasons. You saw the list of what Miranda said was our most recent purchases. And we know that the bus route contract is good through next summer. And then by mutual consent, you can decide what you're going to do. Uh, explore possibilities for school business partnership or apply for grants. We haven't applied for very many grants this year, but that can be something that's discussed in the future and part of what the staff stigmatizes you can look at and look at for the future. Then if you look on the back, it talks about this. It's, uh, the H O's developed city maintenance. And if you go down through there, it's just some of the stuff that we've even brought out and talked about things that you need to take care of. You see kitchen equipment, roofs, painting, um, just many things about living in the district. And you just have to take care of your buildings and the businesses that takes place, business learning. Uh, we, we have a parking area at north side of L S. It's pretty good shape, maybe that one could go up there.
Yeah.
Anyway, development and three-year district technology plan. We have talked with the technology staff. Now we need to get the technology curriculum committee back up and running again. Um, it's again, one of those things as we got busy with other things, it was not part of. But I think it's important for you to see this part. And then in the negotiated agreement, there is a section, our headline. And I did confirm with legal counsel, and this does belong as part of the negotiated agreement. In my experiences in Colorado, it was not in here and that was why I didn't call them to see. And he said, no, in Kansas it belongs here. And it talks about the board having, um, and then educational rules and needs of the districts that are in place. So you look at the longevity of the district and taking care of education. So I just put that in here with only that section, just as a reminder. When I get that in the meeting, I go home and I think, I really want to look more closely at what was shared. And this is just pre-material that would be at your fingertips. Because indeed, your job as board, as you well know, is to make sure that the district, business of the district is taken care of and, um, make the decisions about some of the things that have been shared with you and proposals, et cetera. So I'm gonna be quiet. Do you want to take a little break so that can process and come back with questions? Or do you want to go on?
Support field, I need a quick break. Forward proceeding.
I'm ready.
Good. Okay, just, just love you today, just getting information. You can have a lot of heated discussions, you have more meetings, correctly. There's a lot of information in one day.
And then the, the next thing when you talk about facility needs. In your package, there's a page that looks like this and it has L S, junior high school, that they, this HS, the board office, this is. This is a conversation, conversations with building principals and maintenance and with other key district staff. Computers are not on here, this says maintenance needs. And you look down through there and you're gonna see many of the things that you have seen and talked about or some things that were even in what we talked about today. This does not include transportation or technology. It's just looking at taking care of the buildings. Some of this stuff is stuff that is done every summer because that's just what you do. You get things ready for the next two years. And some of the stuff as of the past, like yes, you know it needs to be done, but where does it fit into where we have money? I'm gonna look, first of all, if you look at the middle one, the Lincoln Junior Senior High School. We have some light fixtures that were like, um, if, they were put in the building when the building was built. And many of them have been changed out. But these light fixtures still work, but they come down and to change light wall, you have to get up in the ceiling to do it. You can't, at, at least you can take off the shield and you can reach up and do whatever you need to do with the ballast or whatever and change out what you need to do. And then let the other ones check, get up into the ceiling and look down because of the way they're built. They've been there for twenty years and they're just some that need to be replaced. Um, whiteboards. When Mrs. Robertson was here, she got a bargain on some whiteboard boards that had been in storage in that module unit at the high school for the last couple of years. And we do have teachers at the elementary level and a teacher at the high school that would like them. So in the process of what the custodial staff and Mrs. Schmidt and Mr. Pittinger have been doing, we can get those whiteboards out, they've been working on framing out that unit and try to get them installed this summer. The good thing is, in my past experiences, you had to have a licensed person that knew the electronic equipment of that whiteboard and be part of the installation of these kind of whiteboards. You don't have to do that. They can just put them in and they'll still do the electronic things that are part of that board. So we hope those are installed for the next four years. Now let's get to the key part. Staff parking lot, when you get into the building, you know the big pot holes that we have there. We filled them in the spring with mud and rock and I've been trying to keep an eye, keeping that in there. But that's a short-term fix. We don't wanna have, what happened this winter when, when we had the gentleman put that in was we had some snow and rain. And if you're a visitor in our building, you don't know that that's a bad spot when it's filled with water. And we don't wanna have somebody come and tell us that we owe them some repairs on their vehicle because we take care of that. So when you have time, directed parking lot there, the, the north driveway, when you go past the FEMA shelter, that has some big rucks and again, they, they filled in those pot holes and it's better, but it's not a long-term fix. And we'll keep doing that until we have a plan for taking care of that. Then you just go down, down there, number seven, the north hallway in the FEMA shelter. One of the decisions we made because we were concerned about funding was we didn't have them put that new tile in there. And now that that's open and you walk through there, you see how bad that tile is. And so one of the hopes is this summer we can have staff deal with that and do some fixtures. So you just go down through there. The biggest other problem, the very biggest problem in addition to the parking lot, is the drainage problem on the east side of the building. And we've talked with you about that before. And Minnesota Company has done some looking at that and what needs to be done. But they haven't given me an estimate to give an idea of what that will cost, but we will add that because it impacts, the drainage problem has done is it impacted the windows across the front and the clips that hold those window pieces in place are damaged. And the cost for replacing those is startling. It was something like seven thousand dollars for Mrs. Walter's office windows just to replace the clips that hold those windows in place. So the drainage problem really needs to be fixed before we prepare the windows or we're gonna be back with the same problem. Yes, it took twenty years to get here. And maybe some of you were aware of the drainage problem from this year, but it is something that needs to be addressed. And then the HBA system located at the high school, that is on the list, but that's a new matter. Another big issue. The rest of that, you know that we put out for bids for the gym floor. We're supposed to have tho- those to do by the next board meeting through the syllabus process and the met, and fill, we're thinking, both of those are, are truly critical to be taken care of. And we'll have those bids for you to approve. And depending upon when they do the work, if it's in June or July, June, if it's in May or June when we're out of school, you'll need to take that out this year's money. If it's something that happens in August, we can take it out next year's money. Just kind of depends upon where the bid's coming and where they fit us into the process. If you look at the elementary school list, you'll see there are some things on there. You've heard about, you know that we have a hallway problem. And I hope to have a system to replace that library wing, the tiles with asbestos in place. We have staff that are helping painting around the HBAC unit. There's probably two locations that we need to look at seriously. Is the vault on the playground when the playground is opened again? And what we do with the preschool playground, Mrs. Schmidt has indicated that that's the worst of the two. And we have to wrap over there and we need to look at, for safety reasons, taking care of that. Many of those things are things at the elementary school that we'll be able to have staff take care of this summer. The pipes in the center hallway, when you come in the main door off north, off the north side of the building, what those pipes do is in the, I, I think it's a major operation. When I talked with Dennis about it, those pipes, depending upon the weather, will move and the tile kind of moves up and it moves down depending upon what's doing. And they are the water pipes, the sewer pipes, all those things that are underneath there. They're set in the concrete, but it is something that I will explain as an older person visiting the building. You know, you're kind of used sometimes in the way you pick up your feet. And when those are bulging just a little bit, sometimes your shoe makes you trip on it. And we don't want anybody to have an injury because, because, so it, it's not something that bothers everybody, but some people, it is something that, you know, need to think about down the road. It's not, we can't ever take care of it. We don't need to do it right away, but sometime we need to take care of. And then over in our building, there are just the few odds and ends that need to be taken care of. I requested a bid to fix the back stairway here. Water back here in the entryway is not sealed. And when we have a rainy season like we did last spring, the moisture gets down into the basement with the soil, solid floor. Moisture is retained even though we have dehumidifiers. And I don't know if you remember in the late summer, early fall, when we come in here and this room kind of had a little honey over to it. It just seemed to be a, yeah, that's it. So it's something that needs to be taken care of. But I asked for somebody to look at it, give me an idea and it did not give back to me. So that's the basement drainage repair. In the popretz store out here in the front, I've had Dennis look at it and we can't figure out why, but that really know lots of condensation that gets on. And there are fans out there that are always set up to it to take care of that. There are only single pane glass which, you know, some days we have people in the popretz store and some days. and some days we don't, but it's just a long-range thing. Our office, we have a lot of condensation, but we don't need the fans. Maybe there's enough movement in there that it breaks it down on the windows, but in the winter, or sometimes there's stuff on the glass. So it's just kind of a weird thing, but this, the paw print store is the worst. And then there are some things about new countertops, just things that you need to be aware of, and we need to plan for to take care of the building out there. When you leave, you'll see that the sheet rock in the corners where the taping is pulling away, there are just some things that need to be taken care of. So when it comes to maintenance, you, as a district, have worked really hard to start with the big things, and to know about what you need to be thinking about and planning for, and this was just to let you know that there's a lot that's gonna go on this summer, but there's a lot that needs to be planned for in the future.
Dr. Summers, can I just add something really quick? The track is really a high priority, I think.
Yeah, I have it as nineteen down there.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that in there.
But you're right. And that's not even in alphabetical order.
No, I know, I just wanted to.
I'm glad you reminded them, because that is huge, you know that.
We didn't hear what that was that she said, she counted.
The track. I couldn't hear that. The track. The track.
Upgrade.
The track, okay, thank you.
And we know there are two parts to that. One is, do you leave it the way it is and feed, or you spend the extra dollars and do what you need to do to make it a meter field so you can have events here? Even if you leave it in feet, people are gonna be resistant to come here, because it doesn't meet the requirements when you're doing competition. And I did not find the estimates on that, so I'll have to dig deeper. I know that you had, you had asked about that, right?
Dr. Summers, I have those. Mrs. Robertson gave them to me, and I have them, yeah, I can give them to you.
Okay.
Because it was like three to five hundred thousand, depending on your bed price.
Yeah, to replace, to change it from a, from a yard to a meter.
Oh, that was just changing.
Yeah, if, if we just wanted to keep it as it is and resurface it, I thought it was closer to a hundred thousand, but I, I don't remember quite.
But that was resurfaced, if they didn't have to do anything, just substrate.
Correct, yes, yes. That was just putting a new, taking out the old top and putting a new one in. And if there's.
If it was just resurfacing, it'd just be a hundred fifty thousand. If they had to do something for the substrate and increase it from, from yard to meter, a meter track, and anyway, it'd be three to five hundred thousand.
Because they don't know what's underneath, yeah.
Yeah. And we spoke to, Jean and I spoke to a couple of truck companies down there in Wichita. We had the conference, and he said that he saw a bid, well, they had just bid for resurfacing, and he said, there's nobody that can tell you what the substrate looked like until we start digging in. So like I said, I'd be very careful if somebody gives a bid just doing a talk, and not tell you how much it's gonna cost to do substrate also, because once they dig in, there's no turning back. So we do have some facilities, there are some huge ones, and some smaller ones. Anything else that the board or principals know that facility needs that are not on this list? Because we need to start looking at the rejected, and it was my understanding too, from the athletic directors, that it's a day or twelve for the track, one more year, is that it?
Well, yeah, and that would have been this year.
Oh, this year?
Yeah. This would have been the, well, that was the recommendation that was given to us by the, whoever came out and did the estimate, said that you probably have one, one more good year, and that would have been this current school year.
And they're, we consider stop using the track.
As far as liability reasons on that, liability, whether they have these that come in, have you heard anything as far as from the coaches around, that the others district that come here, what are they saying about a track?
You mean about coming here, running on our track? They will choose to go to other track meets on the same date, as opposed to coming here, because of that reason.
And I have one more item that we didn't add to this list, and that was, we do not have a sink in the nurse's office, and so she's dealing with anything with bloodwork pathogen, pathogens, or trying to address those needs with students, she has no way to wash her hands that's not within a hundred yards. So that always creates that difficulty there. So if there's any way that we could look at some way to provide access to water for her, that would be very helpful.
Can I go back to a comment on the track, real quick?
Yes.
Coaches said that they didn't want to host, they were reluctant to host if we didn't do something with the track. And that was a comment that was made to me, so.
Does that mean you can look at that, on the bids, and discuss that further? So by having any else in force to track buildings?
Curiosity on buildings. It said on this one sheet, move district office to one of the school buildings. Both buildings support this idea. I thought that was good, and then we have a whole list of things that need replaced here, need fixed, and need whatever. What all, I'll play dumb here. What constitutes the board office? This is a that side, or this side, is the paw print, this room, the back. If we eliminated this, what would we eliminate?
That would be the whole thing.
The whole thing, yes. So if we did that, where is that? This falls into a bigger question, but is the kindergarten, yeah, is the kindergarten room big enough? If we moved sixth grade and opened that building up, could we, could we repurpose that building to house what we need, or?
It's not that.
Is there room at the high school? Is there room, you know, could we move one person to the high school and a few others? And I understand if the teachers need to meet with somebody or need to do something, it's kind of, they have to come downtown, or they have to, you know, it's in a building, it makes a little more sense, but just throwing out a bigger picture question.
The option or the solution, I guess, offered at the high school was that we don't use our entire library. It could be reduced in size, and then maybe half the library would be used for the board office. That was a suggestion.
There was a time, I don't remember if it was Mr. Nelson was here, or if it was Kathy, that there was discussion about how to rearrange things with open classrooms and the way that things work, and that one of, I don't remember which one of them it was, made this, was it Kathy? That made the suggestion that with as many buildings as we had, the high school, the grade school, the preschool, elementary, the kindergarten, and this, that, it was Kathy that suggested that maybe there was a way to reduce one of the buildings and combine some of it into, and I thought she was the high school at the time.
People are going up the high school, that, that's where.
But if we are looking at the option, like he said, if we considered the option of moving the sixth grade, you know, there would be that open space there, you know, or would we want to move the kindergarten back in, would that space be freed up?
Well, that's, Mrs. May.
I was gonna say, one factor to consider here, and this is another long-range plan, is that we work with the Mitchell County Partnership for our preschool. Almost all of their schools they work with have a three-year-old preschool, and we've been asked to have a three-year-old preschool, but it hasn't, at the time, we haven't had the funding or the space for it, so that's just another option to throw out there, that if the sixth grade were to be moved up, perhaps that building could be used, because it's already set up for early childhood. That's just an idea, though. But, but those are good considerations.
Definitely worth thinking about. And as far as for high schools, for schools there, you, Mrs. Walter, know that more?
Well, yeah. The library really isn't used as much, I mean, the whole space is not used efficiently, in my opinion. There are spaces kind of back, there's the old computer lab that now is, you know, Brenda has moved across the hall to one of the empty rooms, so that space is empty. That's where our D S bus line manager, she's, she's there, but she's really the only one in that room. Brenda, you don't use it that much anymore, do you?
It's just pretty much storage.
So there are spaces in that, in that library that we could consolidate the library to a smaller space and open up the rest of it for other uses.
But still be able to include walls or something?
I think so, yeah, I think so.
There is a fair use of space that we could make.
I think, yes. At least in the library, that area is, it's pretty open, and it would just be a matter of building walls, I think.
My question is to confirm, your staff, your staff at most buildings have indicated they wouldn't mind having a board office in their building?
That was their suggestion to me, I didn't bring that up, at least at my, I don't know that first.
At my building, they were for moving it, but they didn't necessarily think it should be moved to the elementary school because of our space issues that we have, that it'd be better used at the high school.
Many places I've been, the preference by the staff across the district was to keep the district office in a separate location. So I was just confirming, if we look at that, that there is support in the staff that moving it to a building.
Everyone will just have to consider what to do to paw print storefronts.
Right.
Because that, that's also included.
But it would be something, you know, for a long-term goal or a long-term plan. I mean, when you look at the number of buildings that we have for the size of our district, you know, maybe there is some, and, and it's not something that would impact the kids. You know, it's not benefits the number of teachers.
You would have the issue with people who come to the building, there, somebody in the office is going to have to let every single person in that wanted to go into the board office have to go through.
Right.
And you don't have someone in the office to buzz them in, which would possibly be an inconvenience.
And just to confirm, we, we own the, the building, correct?
We do own the building, yes. Twenty-six, seven years ago, the board office rented a place down the street, just a few buildings down. They paid an inordinate amount of rent. Mr. Killen was here, this building had experienced a fire. These were actually two separate businesses. He had the foresight to buy this place, both of them for a small amount of money, and had a local contractor fix them up, and within, it was projected that it was going to cost five years to pay for it, and no more rent, and he paid them off in three. And so we've been in our building rent-free for twenty-three years. Our utilities here are nominal, because we're surrounded on both sides by buildings. And so, you know, our biggest expense probably is the roof repair that we've had. We do have flat roofs on both of our buildings, but we are currently housing the P A T, the parents' teachers' position, and so she occupies all of this clear up to here. This is all storage for her. That position doesn't necessarily have to be in a certain spot, it just takes a lot of space for all of her stuff. And so Brenda has her office back here, Kathy wanted the paw print kids to have a storefront, so she did this office. And then over on the other side, we have Norm and I, the superintendent, the treasurer, and then that pullback room is storage. And so is, is it to say that we wouldn't fit somewhere else? No, but we're gonna take up a lot of room somewhere, so it could maybe be split. I don't know. I don't know what would be, I don't know how much money could be gained by selling this. I mean, that would be an option too, but that's kind of the background on that. We don't pay taxes, as far as property taxes, probably, so.
Which is upkeep and utilities.
Our utilities are not bad, and our insurance, and we can, and Brenda can give that for you.
Yeah.
I think that's just the expense, I mean, there really no other expenses other than upkeep and, you know, insurance.
Our carpet is twenty-five years old, and so the flooring, that up put in the front, we raised the money to do that. Nancy, Norman, and I, Kathy, we did concession stands at the high school to do that, and to replace our blinds. So, you know, really, as far as money really being spent here, we don't spend a lot, but, you know, it could be zero if, if somebody wanted it.
But then there's always that, I mean, you move somewhere else, and it's empty, and you don't sell it, so then you still, I mean, yeah.
And what, it is, it is a positive thing to have in your downtown, to have offices that are, that are here. And the other thing I would just say from, say from the superintendent's point of view, I'm often here alone before and after everybody else is gone. And I like the fact that I just have a couple doors to be thinking about, you know, just, yeah. It's a selfish thing, but when I was playing in school, it was often eerie to have a whole school.
I think it's a lot of good information, it's the things we have to consider, and that's why I don't like this information, and that's been shared, because I like to look at numbers, I like to look at that, as far as what are we paying per month expenses here versus rebuilding something in the high school, or the logistics, as far as the paw prints. Board, as far as what we need as a board to be able to have a executive decisions, et cetera, if you can give us that opportunity, yeah, so anyhow.
Well, there was, in the discussion at the high school about this office, that it was at the same time the conversation about reducing administration from three to two. So if you reduce administration from three to two, wherever you house the district office would be where the superintendent slash principal would be. So if it were at the high school, it would be the high school principal slash superintendent at the high school, or if it was elementary, superintendent, elementary principal at the elementary school. That was, that was the, all kind of grouped together into one conversation, so just throwing that out.
Oh, there's a lot of good ideas. Anything else as far as facilities you can think of? I know that Dr. Summers mentioned about elementary and high school roof, and that it's not being under warranty is one thing, but it is under the insurance. I don't know what the board would feel like, though, as I like to know for the future aspect, just getting a bit to know what we're looking at, if that would come to the effect that we have to do something in that room, what is the cost of that? I don't have any help, I don't have any, remember last time you replaced that?
We did it in sections, yeah.
In sections?
We did it over a four-year period of time, and we replaced certain sections with a drill last year, so. And it was a lot of money.
I'll put that on the list, and I can get.
A year and a dollar amount.
And get some ideas from you. And I will tell you, you know, we had that leak in the library, and when we had the inch and three-fourth rain this week, Dennis was up there checking and making sure the water was leaking off like it's supposed to, but there was no leak in that classroom, in the library. So wherever that was coming, but we had no wind with this rain, like we did when the wind, when that came in, there was no way, there was no moisture, so it disconnected to one of those phantom leaks that are enormous, that wind always impacts, winds from that direction.
You know, both facilities are gonna need curriculum. And so what is the priorities in curriculum, and what is the cost of those, those living? That'd be nice for the board for number two.
And the D L T will, will get that too.
Anything else? I guess we did mention the buses, the contract. And I know when initially we didn't have an option, you had to go, you cannot replace five buses at one time, so as a board, we want to look at gradually increasing, getting hopefully, versus renewing the contract. That's one thing we just want to throw in, in a bunch of two, and kind of look in at numbers.
There are a couple of things, as you think about that, and hit this direction that we can do, because you have a copy of the contract, though. Number two says, it ends July thirty-one, and it may be removed or left thereafter as mutually agreed upon by both parties and provided by law. But I can have a conversation with D S bus lines about what they might charge us to sell a couple of their used buses, and I talked to you about the long-range planning. If you decide to do your own transportation, you need to understand that a bus needs to be purchased every year. By the time you run them on the country route, some of them will have a longer life, because the route is not as rough as others. Some that they will need to be traded out maybe earlier, it just depends. Maybe you move the buses around, whatever, whatever it can be. But I have found in the past that about a five-year cycle works, and you have five routes, plus the activity route bus. And the activity route bus needs to be different than the normal route buses, because you need the compartments underneath to haul the instruments, or to haul all the gear that. to haul the instruments or to haul all the gear that goes with the different sports. Where in the country, our routes are small enough that when I get on that bus from my house with my trumpet horn, we don't have fifty passengers on the bus, so we can take my trumpet case to back the bus and still ride safely and not have to have the compartments. That's the whole point of, you don't necessarily have to have the compartments on the route buses, but you do need an activity bus that has underneath compartments. You don't need that. Sometimes when people talk activity bus, as they talk about buying a bus that has Lincoln Leopards on the side with a beautiful leopard picture. That's, when I talk about an activity bus, I'm simply talking about a yellow bus that's used for sports.
On behalf, yeah.
But you have to have those compartments underneath it. And everywhere I've been, we've had good luck. We have had good luck with buying a new bus sometimes, but we've gotten some really good buses that have lasted for a good duration at two-thirds the cost of the used bus. And your old buses, somebody else could do it, didn't have problems. And the vendors have been very good about working with this. So again, I would say, don't be afraid of letting out both kinds, old and new, if that's a choice you make. And I know, somebody said to me, we need to look at the activity bus or is our activity bus getting, you know?
I think it's okay. I haven't heard, I mean, I guess I haven't heard anything otherwise. I mean, we've had some little issues.
But nothing major.
Not that I.
It may have been they were wanting a big white bus with the Lincoln.
That might be.
I didn't ask them to go on specifics.
And like you were saying, the variation, you talking about one every year, meaning the one that's five years old and replaced. So it's kind of adding on one. And I know I spoke to superintendent at Interpecum in a different school district, and they had a rotation to that number, a bigger school. A lot bigger district. They had like ten, fifteen buses, I think, but they replaced two buses every two years and had that continuously in their budget. And they had, so they do, have model school and buses for a lot of that. So those are things we need to start running the numbers, so I'm looking at. And I know, visiting Mr. Crenshaw too, he has a main school district that went from contract to buying their own bus fleet, am I correct?
Just this year.
Just this year.
And when I talked to Dale Dennis, one of the things he said, I think about something you said earlier, excuse me for.
No, you're fine.
He, when I, when I came here and was surprised to find out what we pay and what is involved with it, I asked him about how does the district go. And he said, that's the one time he would recommend a lease purchase. You might be able to buy all five buses upfront with the lease purchase. And when we were talking about, do we look at paying off those, there's no penalty for paying off the lease purchases that we have, the roof and the computers. You know, that again is something to think about as you're planning for, for the future. That would be one thing to look at if you, if we couldn't come up with another way to make those purchases possible. And I will tell you one other thing about it. Norma does a ton of stuff with busing. And I understand from conversations with her that she sort of was, after, did a lot of things that a transportation director does. And she still spends a lot of time taking care of transportation things. So again, going to owning our own buses, it's going to take the time of somebody. It might be joint effort time between the administrative assistant and the superintendent. The board treasurer has enough going on and getting money that that's not something else I would say we need to add to that position. But Norma does have some background in it. And Mr. Crenshaw was not even said, yes, he understood about your district going to. So it sounds like he may have some background experiences to lend on, so it would, it would probably have to be a team effort, so we're adding another position. That was the whole point, my grant going on there. I know we can't add another position, but we have to have a way to manage that in, say, the meal rules and regulations and everything.
Yeah, that's why it's important to start running that number to see whether it is really going to be an issue or not. And you have costs side by side comparison because numbers will come. As far as having almost a half of you have the buses, would you have a way of coming in every year? If that money hasn't been here to take for something else that could be utilized both of the bus, there's just different options.
Is there cost, a set cost? Does it say in this thing and under submit or?
We pay three hundred, three hundred thirty, no, three, three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars plus gas and extra, extra. But activities, when they have to run our activities and we don't have a bus route person. We have two buses that have to go around.
Different somewhere.
Yeah, different places. So this year, we paid ten months of thirty-one thousand dollars a month. And it will go up a little bit next month. The, on the last page of that bus contract shows it's going up nine dollars a route in the county routes. Do you see there twenty-one?
Yeah.
And the hourly rate is going up, do you see that?
So I guess we go over and jump into other planning matters.
There are two things, two things.
Yeah.
Talk about graduation and the second thing is the four-day week.
Okay.
And I'm going to do that, then we'll do graduation.
Sure.
I sent out, and the front of this page shows questions from my past experiences. How do you look at moving to the four-day week? Did the district decision take off Monday or Friday? Why did you pick that day? Has your district seen any change, positive or negative, in academic achievement? How's your district structured the daily schedule, K-12 and pre-K? What kind of secondary class schedule, you know, six, seven, eight period day, where you fit in your advisor period? What did your district do either on Monday night or Friday nights, when sports events? If your school's not in session, did you find it difficult, difficult to alter your sports schedules, competition? What did you do about weekend tournaments and academic competition? Did you find any problems with post-secondary classes offered on your campus route online? Was there any sort of impact on CTE offerings and requirements for various certifications that the kids earn? What was the impact on transportation cost? Either for your own or if you're contracted without. Did you find any savings in food service programs? Why did your district go with the four-day week? And did you find any actual potential cost savings in the four-day week? And you have various responses I got from people. Somebody did a study. And probably the most impressive thing in this was one afternoon this week, I was diligently looking on, trying to get ready for today. And I was on the phone with somebody else and Norma came in and she said, Dr. Betty, Dale Dennis is on the phone. You may want to take his message. So I quickly got off the phone with that person I was on and Dale Dennis got on the phone and he said, Betty, we need to connect Dr. Watson to this conversation. Mister of Education and the head finance guy were wanting to talk to me. I guess I lose my still, just like, oh. They wanted to talk about the four-day week. And they said it was okay to say to you that in their opinion, if you ask their opinion, they're going to tell you that it is not what is best for academics. It is not what is best for the community. It is not cost-saving yet. And the concern about academics is the people who are most, most appreciative of the four-day week are the classified staff. The classified staff is an issue everywhere. When we read through this, people said they had to raise the salaries, the classified staff, to keep them. They often don't close the buildings. We did an extensive study, I told you before, in Colorado, and we found unless we closed our buildings on weekends, no tournaments, no rec commission. If anybody came into the room and worked during the winter, they had to know that they needed to bring their fleece on top of their shirt because we weren't turning on heat in any room. The only way we saved any money was by not having the building in operation. Well, in our community, what is the community focal point in our district? So my concern has always been the academics. There are some people in here that say that, and when you have to, there's some people that say that they don't feel like the academics were impacted. But there's more negatives to that than positives. So if it's not a cost-saving, if it's not an academic improvement, I'm not sure that there's, my, my personal opinion from the work that I've done of this now in the past is it's still not in their best interest. But that's just my opinion, and I'm not the one, and I don't make the decisions.
I know visiting with another town in the southwest Kansas, they were to have a four-day school district, and he said the cost-saving wasn't that much for his district. But employee retention, the teacher, as far as being there four days, so being part of this five days community school. But he said otherwise, as far as the sporting events, et cetera, you still have to get kids there, you still have to do your practice, you still have to do all these things. But that was one, which I could, I believe is extensive research as you did, so I appreciate that.
Well, I think it's, it's important. My job is, and somebody said you'd like some information on this, that's my job is to get that information for you. And, hi, one of the districts in here will tell you, they've been doing it for twenty years and they wouldn't go back any other way. So in their community, they have a family to that.
I feel it needs to be a community party and everybody's so busy and small communities changing their, I believe it could have.
One of the things that, you know, you read here in some of that, and we found in Colorado, that it was really difficult for families to find childcare for that alternate day, but it was. But somebody else said, you know, we usually take off Fridays, but when Monday was a holiday, our crack calendar was built. Because you know there are a lot of Monday holidays. Our calendar was built so that we went to school on Friday and we were off on Monday. So people learn to adapt. If that's a decision that is made, people learn to adapt and make it work the best they can for the kids. I thought that was just interesting that, you know, so when the three-day week thing, it just worked. The other thing that I'm sure you're getting as many questions as we are, and I've been telling Mrs. Walter about every other day, I look and talk about, because people are asking questions about graduation. But I wasn't bringing it to you as a decision maker until we have some clarity from the evidence. Because our health department administrator, as you well know, is very concerned about more than ten people being in any area. She told us that we should not be having even classes, kids in the building for classes, even if they were less than ten. And that's, we follow her guidelines. But I know that other people are doing things and making plans. And so I'm going to let Christie talk for a minute, and then I'm going to be quiet because you guys need to have a conversation about that too. What's your thoughts on it?
I just, I know that the principal from Sylvan had called and asked if we had any plans for graduation, and I said, no, not yet. And from what I understand, what he told me is they're planning on July twentieth, or I'm sorry, June twentieth. It's a Saturday at nine o'clock. And if that is, if that cancels, then their, their backup date would be July twenty-fifth. Same time, it's also a Saturday. And he was wondering about conflicts. And I told him that we were waiting to hear what happens with the governor and what, how they open things up. But he was, he told me they were going to try to roll that out. He said this week, at the end of this week. I haven't heard anything from people yet. But I do know there, some of my teachers have told me that there's comments in town. People are saying, well, Lincoln's not doing anything about graduation, but Sylvan is doing things about graduation. So, you know, I know you're always going to, you're going to fight that. And I know we're trying to be, we don't want to make fans that will get canceled and rescheduled. I know it's, it's a, it's a process that we have to follow, and that's kind of what I, well, we've been, what I've been telling people is that we're, we're not forgetting about it. We are talking about it, it's just something that we have to plan for. It's not just something that we can just make a quick decision. So I assured Mr. Starkey at Sylvan that we would not conflict whatever we, I'm glad he told us that information because if we get to a point where we can make plans that we know when they're going to plan, and we won't, we won't do anything to conflict with their graduation plans, so.
I would say July would be more realistic.
Yeah.
I saw another school posted there doing theirs in August.
Yes, yes. And I think Beloit is doing theirs at the end of July as well. I think they've rescheduled theirs.
I think July will be more realistic than June. I think we're still going to see limited numbers that can be in any location. So July would be more realistic. You know, I would like for us to be able to do something when that, when it opens up and when it's legalized.
But as of right now, you're talking about a traditional graduation.
And if we can, yes, as much as we can.
Has anybody thought about other options?
Yes, there are lots of options. I know, I, I'm joined a webinar next week about virtual graduations and what that looks like. Jostens has put out a bunch of information about how to do a virtual graduation. And so I will attend that and see that, what that kind of looks like and how to do that. Because I, if we can't do it together, I guess we'd have to do it some way, maybe virtual. Some schools are doing drive-throughs where they pull up and they're capping down a car and somebody hands them to the plumber.
The one thing we still have to keep in mind is what the county says. Because there were families that got together at Easter time and something happened and that whole group then had to.
Yeah.
Things like that happen. And you don't want to have graduation not be able to celebrate with families. So that's why we talked about July.
Yeah, that might be more realistic and to do something more traditional. You know, they earn that, you know, families deserve to be able to celebrate that milestone with their kids and.
There are some schools that are doing it virtual, but then they're going to, they're doing it, well, not really virtual. I guess there would be like the student and the board president or commander and a couple of his family members there. And then they're doing each one at a set time, and then the school's going to somehow splice them all into another so that they have a folder. I think each of the kids would have a copy of this school graduation program that I, you know, they really have that ability.
And there was talk about doing a live stream kind of thing also. I mean, if, if we get to a point where we could, it's fifty people, maybe just graduating class and the board members, and then we live stream it maybe. I don't know, that was an option as well.
So walking in a locked gym door and walking out the other door.
Probably once they roll out their opening state plan, we'll be able to maybe make some kind of.
And that's what I've been trying to tell people, if they, if they contact me about graduation. We're just trying to make a plan based on what we're allowed to do from the health department and from the governor and all of those things, but.
And just making sure it's not too close to moving in for college.
Right, right.
Mrs. Walter and I did discuss that if, if nate be and we were going to have a traditional graduation, that we could use my building because it would be air-conditioned in the summer and it's a much larger space and that would be a, we just have to work out some logistics, but it would be an option. That would be something to look at.
Or outside the track.
Oh, outside the track.
Yeah.
That was what?
Well, because it used to be it's outside, tracks are inside.
It would just be the limited number of people that you would, some days aren't best to be up there, but.
It was hot.
Hot in the knee.
Air Force Academy all spread out on the football. They didn't show the audience, so you don't know whether the audience was there or not.
But hopefully when the governor releases her plan for how to open a backup estate, we can try to make some kind of plan for the kids and their families.
Mr. Crenshaw, you know what you're doing and I have one.
We're having this exact same discussion. And again, we're waiting to kind of see what's going to be allowed. We've talked about even dividing the senior class up and having A through, you know, G and then H through something so that we could, although we can't have more than ten under a roof, if we get a bigger number allowed, we could distance in the gymnasium by that. So everything's unknown right now.
I was going to say, I've seen on TV, there was a church service in Wichita, everybody was parked in their vehicles. And then when it come to the communion, they just drove up in the car one by one and went back to the. up in the car one by one and went back to the parking spot.
And we have a big city park, we've talked about that. We could, I've got maybe 89 seniors, and we could have one vehicle allowed per family, and we could scatter them through the park with a big stage on our football stadium outside of it, and do a, a drive-up. And we can supersize and do everything.
One second, let's find out if Governor Kelly designs.
If we'll go for the next four days.
We're going to talk about it in the next meeting.
We can bring up anything that, that you wanted the next four days. I do want to say one thing about this planning discussion. You will, you will be, I'm sure, amazed as you hear stories. Your professional educational staff and your classified staff have, the best qualities have surfaced, basically is what I'm trying to say. Walking by a classroom and hearing a teacher having a Zoom session with a killer, and hearing kind of laughter between that, seeing one of the principals having a Zoom meeting with their staff, and seeing all the staff, you know, interactive, listening to how people are trying to work through the system. It is a remarkable time, and we do have to recognize your staff has, has done what you would expect, and even more as a professional staff, and taking care of the kids, doing their best with learning. Your principals have been doing home visits, the efforts between the tech staff and the principals to get technology to work in homes, that there were things going on. The special ed department in Beloit got three hotspots for us that helped our families. Brenda got a hotspot that had been not used for several years, and the faculty number had been changed to somebody else. And we had the equipment that she worked with Verizon to get back up in Beloit, and we have a hotspot with a teacher that didn't have access, and another student. So we have six hotspots out there that made a difference for kids and learning, staff learning. So I just want to say that when you see a staff there, it's appropriate to tell them that, and say that they're working hard, doing all kinds of things. Period educators are helping with different things. We had a couple of teachers that are helping deliver meals at least, we have this one kind of outlayer lunch route, and when you see them and say something to them, the biggest smile comes on their face, because they didn't see all of the kids, or five of the kids, or whatever it may be, when the kids come to pick up their meals. So it's just with much appreciation that I say to any staff that are listening, thank you for what you've done to make this work, because I cannot, I know what my, how my job is different, I can't imagine how your jobs are different, because you had to recruit them, figure out what, how to make this work for the kids. So, and more, thank you for your support in this process.
Thank you, and absolutely thank you, staff and administration, and the board of the staff too, because it's been some tremendous trials, I was going to say, but also opportunities for all learning. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, and I just want to, I just wanted to throw up today, if the board has any other additional information they would like. There's a lot of information, I know, but I think the board across the North Side, what we stand, what we have upcoming, and expenses, and what opportunities are, and thank you to the principals for putting together this educational plan, and thank you to the staff about it too. Anything else left to bring up on the planning matters, anything you think of? If you think of anything, bring it back to the next board meeting. Personally, I like to digest things and look at all the things, so. So thank you, Brad, that you've been putting all this together. So then we're moving on to an executive session.
Let's just break.
You want to take a break? Okay. So how many minutes? So we do a five-minute break? Okay, so we go for a break from 10:40 to 10:45.